Good morning. Planning Board is now in session. This is a rare daytime meeting for the Planning Board. The matter before us has caused us to do this today. Also, the schedule of the Board. I want to thank the Planning Board for having all five members here this morning. We discussed a potential meeting, and this was the time when all five of us could meet. So, thanks for being here. One of our members was about 2,000 miles away from here yesterday and came back to be for this meeting. Before we get started with the agenda, which is the approval not required for the 84 Main Street, I think it's important that we recognize two people among many. Bridget Brady, could you please stand up? Jennifer Fox is not here today, right? Now, she was your partner?
Yes, yes, and it was very much a team effort, too. It's everything with one of these guys as well.
Do they need microphones? You can pick up the sound.
You've got to have Bridget at the table.
Bridget, can you, in a couple of minutes, can you stand up and tell us? First of all, introduce your team, and then I would like you to tell us what you did.
Okay, so, Mrs. Maggie Shoemaker, she ran our Facebook page, and she's just out there almost every day. This Kayla, she's been constantly supporting us, and she's been out there a lot, too. Katie Travance, Annie Rollins, Will Hurley, and then Margot. And then I met these two lovely people yesterday. So, what we've been doing is, on Tuesday, my mom told me about the possible demolition of 84 Main Street. And so, I went out there and started protesting. I ran into Jen Fox, and she actually had been having similar ideas earlier on to be able to save this house. So, we kind of joined up, and we started calling a bunch of people, and these are our first responders. They came right out. So, after that day, we were protesting every day, pretty much 12 hours a day, until we heard the news, from Mr. Samino, actually, saying that you guys can go home. You did it. At that point, we didn't really know what we did, but we did something. But I got the press release, hearing about Mr. Deli Piscoli not letting the sale go through, and we were very excited about that. And so, we know our work is definitely not over yet, but we're excited that we've overcome probably our biggest hurdle yet.
Very good. Mrs. Bartolini, any comments?
Yes, I, too, would like to congratulate -- you can sit, though. I'd like to congratulate all of you. You don't often find a group of teenagers who will just pick up and get not only involved, but effectively involved and diversified involved in the sense of pickets and ideas for saving and Facebook pages and well-coordinated campaigns. I don't know how many of you saw the Metro West Daily News letters to the editor. Resident from Ashland praised all of you for what you were doing, and since there's a similar -- different, but similar situation going on for historic estate in Ashland, they were hoping that Ashland teenagers would emulate what you had done. And you may even be getting phone calls, for all I know, about how did you do it and help us, but there is the hope that something similar, and it was a print -- and the headline was "Praise to Southborough Teenagers" and your involvement. And the other thing I'd like to say, I ironically was just talking to Mr. Mills about this. I have been used to being -- having worked in government for 40 years. I went to school, and I was frequently the only woman in the classroom. I am so proud to see this all-woman picket team and the effect of what -- I'm hoping that it helps you cut your teeth and that many of you will opt to make a career out of government, and if not a career, continue in citizen volunteerism as you mature. It's really a great profession to get into, and it's one woman can rise to the top. And so, I encourage you to stay with this.
Mr. Mills?
Just to echo what the Chairman and Mrs. Bartolini were saying, tremendous job to get organized, to inspire the town as well. You have over, what, 1,300 signatures, I heard, I think, last?
Yeah.
Which is almost above a tenth of the percent of the town. To do that in a week in the summer, when most people are gone, it seems like, the town is pretty dead, is amazing. And also, from what I heard on the blog as well, or, you know, from myself, it sounds like you've inspired other, let's say, tenured people in town to get involved more, too, which is sometimes very difficult to do. So, again, congratulations on your efforts. I think you did make a difference. You've got the voice out. It's nice to see the younger generation care about the look and the feel of the town, too. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks?
A couple of things. If you do get a call to go help another town, I'd like to be your agent. I heard a rumor about some changes in the politics in Southborough, something about Bridget from mayor and all her helpers and supporters as a new mayor's council. I'd select me thinking twice. My congratulations also, along with everyone that you've heard. Haven't heard anybody say anything negative about the Actulene. It clearly got attention, and it's great to see you getting involved and doing it. Good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Snare?
Thank you. Great job, everybody. I want to congratulate you on your success with all this. I agree with everything that's been said, especially Mrs. Bartolini's suggestion that you pursue this for the long term. I think Southborough needs more people like you, and your dedication to our town is really admirable, so we're all proud.
Thank you. So, one of the reasons that we reached out and asked if you could come to the meeting this morning was to continue the learning experience. So, the plan before us, which is what really triggered all of this action, is called an "approval not required." It's an A&R. And when I first got on the Planning Board, the very first thing that we had on the agenda was an approval not required. And it took about maybe 15 or 20 years for me to understand how you can have an approval that's not required. And I think the way it was explained to me was, if your teacher says, if you do all your homework for the whole course, you don't have to take the final exam, but you have to show the teacher that you did all the homework and you did it right. So, in this case, the proponent comes forward with a plan that shows that they've met all the rules. And if the Board agrees that you've met all the rules, then you don't have to go on to the next step. And therefore, the Board acknowledges that you've done all the right things, you've met all the rules, and there's no -- and our signature on the plan acknowledges that you've done the work and you meet the rules. Approval not required. So, with that, that's the first item on the agenda, and we have 21 days. The Board has 21 days from the date of submission to take action. There's three courses of action that the Board can take. One is to sign the plan, one is to deny the plan, and the other one is to do nothing. We do nothing after 21 days, then the plan is considered --
Constructively.
Constructively approved, which is the same as if we signed it, essentially, at least from the Board's point of view. From the proponent's point of view, there are some complexities that make that a little bit different, but it's essentially signed. So, when did we receive the plan?
It was received on July 9th, Wednesday, July 9th, so the Board has until Tuesday to endorse it, or to deny, or constructively approve.
And consistent with most -- some A&Rs, especially ones that have some complexities to them, we would seek Town Council's advice relative to our actions on the plan. And that's what the Town Planner did. She sent the plan off to the Town Council. He has reviewed it and rendered some advice to the Board, which we've had the benefit of. So, I'm going to open it up to the Board. There are actually three plans here on the table, only one of which we're focusing on for action, and that's the one that was submitted in July. There were two previous A&Rs. One was in May of 2010, and another one was submitted in September of 2010. They're different than the one that's before us now, and the differences may be part of what we discuss. Before we do that, we'll ask the Town Planner to read some information that we received from the applicant for the owner.
Right. I received an email on Wednesday, July 23rd, from William Pizzoni. He's the attorney for the applicant, for the owner, John Deli Piscoli. Jennifer, as you are aware, this office represents Jennifer Burchill and her husband, John Deli Piscoli, concerning a property located at 84 Main Street in Southborough, Mass. I understand there is a hearing scheduled for this Friday morning concerning the above referenced application filed by Moss Development, Inc. As advised by my client's agreement, contract with Mr. Moss has been terminated. However, they wish to proceed with the application presently before the Planning Board. As discussed, my clients intend on holding the plan and any other permits they have or obtain until they determine how and if their current ongoing discussions with you and the town of Southborough proceed as they relate to possibly preserving the Garfield House, which is presently located on the property. As you know, this was always my client's intention, and they wish to take appropriate steps to help preserve, same while protecting their own interests as well. They are very optimistic that they will be able to accommodate everyone's desire to possibly save and refurbish the Garfield House. However, as noted in our discussions, it will require cooperation and participation by the community and its elected officials without compromising my client's rights as loan owners. Thanks, and please advise or contact me with any questions or concerns. William Pizzoni.
Thank you. Was there anything else that you wanted to say?
No.
Awesome. So, I'll turn it over to the Board. Mrs. Bartolini?
There's two things that I'd like to talk about before we actually talk about the plan that sort of the procedural kind of things that you've been talking about. I believe you are the only member of this Planning Board who was present and acted on the two A&Rs that preceded this one, the May and December 2010. I didn't come on until May of 2011. So, could you give us a quick run-through of the differences between the -- or among the three plans and how they -- the first two differ from what's before us this morning? That I think will also help the viewing audience.
Thank you for having the needle point back to me.
[laughing]
As part of the learning experience?
Yes. Well, I think that's been good already, the definition of an A&R and what our role is and the time we have to act and what we have to look at. But I think what qualifies it as the A&R and how these two differ is helpful.
The first one that was --
Because the terrain hasn't changed. It's maybe the number of lots.
The first one that was received in May of 2010 showed the -- is it 4.5 acres?
It's 5.2 acres.
So, the whole property is 5.2 acres. This plan showed property line goes along the reservoir, along Deerfoot Road, over to Parkerville, down Parkerville, and then there's a separate lot here that goes up that lot line and back over here to the reservoir. This plan, I believe this plan added this easement for septic system for this lot. It also added this line that created Lot Number Two, and this line that separated and created Lot One and Lot Three. Essentially, it divided the land into three residential lots, all with frontage from the one single residential lot, and then it added this easement for the septic. That was May of 2010.
[inaudible]
So, this plan here is September of 2010, and it shows the septic that was over on that one, but it changes the lot lines. And instead of three lots, it creates two. Lot One, which is all of this, and then Lot Two. Lot One would have legal frontage over here, and Lot Two would have legal frontage on Main Street and perhaps on Parkerville Road. These little ovals depict stone walls. So, as you know, there's a stone wall around the property, and then there's a stone-lined stream that goes through the property.
So, the first one was declined?
No, they were both signed.
Oh.
They were both signed. And then, the plan before us --
Because they met zoning.
Right.
For frontage and head frontage on a pre-existing public way.
So, the plan before us is different. It still shows that septic easement, but it creates four lots. Now, here's the original lot line. So, it creates Lot One, which goes like that, with the easement. Shows Lot Two, that contains the existing home. Lot Three, and then Lot Four, that would contain this restricted zone. It's a separate issue, but it's basically a portion of the lot, of the land that, under previous agreement with the Conservation Commission, was set aside as a restricted zone where you couldn't build anything. And so, Lot Four would then contain the carriage barn and the old stone church, and then what's described here as a shed. So, four lots. One of them showed three, and another one showed two. This is the plan we're looking at today. Mrs. Bartolini?
My second procedural question is to the Town Planner. You mentioned that you received a letter from the landowner via his attorney, and the contract with Mr. Moss has been voided, and they, however, wish to proceed with the They being the owners, or they being Mr. Moss?
That's not clear, because the application we received on July 9th, the name of the applicant is Moss Development. The name of the property owner is Jennifer Burchill, who was given permission for the applicant, so that's what I have. And I just read the email.
Because the reason I'm asking, I don't know, given what has transpired between our last meeting and this one, whether we have a valid application before us because the landowner authorized Mr. Moss to do something. Mr. Moss no longer appears to be involved in the application for the moment, and, you know, we -- and I don't know whether the letter from Attorney Pisconi -- Excuse me, that's a --
Old Town Council.
Pizzoni.
Former.
Yeah, former.
Still in the [inaudible].
But anyways, that Attorney Pizzoni isn't clear to me anyways as to whether he means his clients now want to have this A&R process, and if so, I think they need to file an application under their name. And I don't want to look like I'm just a bureaucrat looking for holes here, but if we end up approving something and someone comes back later and says, "You didn't have a valid application before you," then the approval or denial is void also. So, I'm trying to catch those loopholes that make -- that come back to bite.
We're trying to protect the homeowner as well, or the applicant in the process.
Yeah, the applicant and particularly the town.
Yep.
So, those are my questions. Do you want me to actually do what you asked me to do now? I'll tell you what, I'll go on. Because of my seat, we have this process where the chairman speaks, then the vice-chairman, and frequently that you guys ask the questions, you know, you haven't guessed what area you're going to ask.
Did you want to go next, Mr. Mills?
Sure.
Mr. Mills?
Well, I agree with Ms. Bartolini, and that was one of my questions when the first application came in, because Mr. Moss didn't know the property at the time. He was presenting it. I know that does happen, but now where it's actually fallen through, I agree 100% with your sense. My other question is specifically, just looking at, and I know Mr. Moss had mentioned that he was going to use a common or was going to request a common driveway, but when you look at the plan itself, the way it sits before us, if that weren't to happen, Lot Number One, my question's considering the actual frontage onto Parkerville Road, because it would actually cross, I mean, if you were to put a driveway in there, it would have to cross the wetland boundary and the existing easement 100% to get to wherever if a home or a structure were to be put there. So, to me, that doesn't -- it seems like we need some further direction, either from the Concom or Mass History. I haven't seen one where this has happened before for that type of access for that one lot. So, I have questions around that specific lot, and would either rely on the Board's direction on how that's been handled in the past, or Town Council, maybe, for interaction on it.
I think it would be a Town Council question, because under the subdivision rules and regs, the Board can determine whether there's adequate access, and some of that is right of way with pavement with maximum grade and sight distance requirement. So, that would be one thing to have that discussion with Town Council, if that would fall under the adequate access.
Mrs. Bartolini?
Another process that -- you gave us a piece of paper this morning that sort of addresses some of the issue that Mr. Mills just mentioned about the implication of wetlands running through the width of Lot One and separating the building area from the frontage on Parkerville. Can you -- to help everyone to understand what we're dealing with?
There's case law that is cited. Let me just ground that. The Corrin versus Planning Board of Sudbury, where the applicant submitted an A&R with six lots which had frontage on the public way, meeting the zoning bylaw. There were no physical impediments from the road to the lot, although there was wetlands on three lots that may interfere with the access. The frontage provided adequate access to the lots. The question came up whether wetlands are under the Board's jurisdiction, and in that case, there was an appeal, and the Board favored the applicant, because you can't look at internal -- typically, you can't look at internal wetlands, et cetera. But again, we don't have Town Council hearings on the patient this week to ask that question. This, you know, is that internal, or is that the access? Is that access legitimate concern, and raise a friggin' aisle on that Lot One?
Mr. Jenks? Before I get into that analysis, I wish I had asked earlier, or just made the comment earlier, that along with the congratulations to all of these wonderful guys that went out and did all of this work, I think just as much congratulations goes to their parents. They've raised great kids, and I just want to get that on record. I'm confused by Mr. Pizzoni, Attorney Pizzoni's letter. I was prepared today to make a motion that we deny the A&R request on the basis that the applicant could not show ownership or control of the property. Two things that play on that now. One, I didn't realize that the application was authorized by the owner, so that wasn't an issue. Attorney Pizzoni's letter sounds like the property owner is saying, "We'd like to step into the position of the applicant, Moss Development, and have you can have this Board consider this plan as being from them." Is that the way everyone interprets that letter?
I'll read the sentence.
Okay.
Because I think it seems to stop short of what. "As advised, my client's agreement slash contract with Mr. Moss has been terminated. However, they wish to proceed with the application presently before the Planning before the planning board." I think that sounds like it comes a little bit short of what you're saying, Mr. James.
I think it would be great to have legal town council's opinion on this, but I think they need to submit an application. When I was looking at some case law on this and I looked very quickly, I was surprised not to find anything that said the applicant had to be the property owner or have the written approval of the property owner, which in this case apparently he did. And I was... I should explain it on an A&R. The only reason that a planning board can deny an A&R is if the planning board makes a determination that this is really a subdivision and has to follow the subdivision rules. So if we look at the plan and we say, "No, based on the fact that each new lot would have adequate frontage on a public way, has clear access," and Jennifer, that I believe means "to the property," not "to a house to be built on the property." Then the planning board only has two actions in that case. One is to approve it, and the other is to do nothing, which means it will be approved by law in 21 days. I couldn't find anything that said the applicant has to be the owner. And my... I'm thinking, "Well, or have the owner's permission." And they'd have to be. If not, I'm going to go out and file a bunch of A&Rs on all kinds of property in South Pro. Who knows what will happen? Although I wouldn't want the wrath of this audience here. So I was still prepared to make a motion that we deny the application and thinking that, okay, if the applicant didn't have to be the owner, he could sue the board for overstepping its bounds. But then the rules on who can appeal a decision of the board on this are pretty clear that it has to be somebody who's aggrieved by the decision. And if he's not the owner, I don't know how we could argue he was aggrieved by the decision. But I guess that's kind of moot now. But I think from the reading of that letter that the present owner should refile an application. Of course, that gives us more time to answer questions if that's the case.
So two more working days?
So Phil, they could withdraw the application and then resubmit, and then 21 days?
Then I... That would be my argument, that the 21-day period would start again. I think the fact that it sounds like they want to resubmit this application is another indication that if this town or its residents are going to do anything to try to make sure that that house remains, the fact that Moss Development is... Appears to be no longer in the picture doesn't mean that the concept is not in the picture. So I think there's a caution to everybody who's interested in saving that house. And I personally don't think that's going to be an easy task. But it's a task we should face.
And you think it's Mr. Deli Puscoli that needs to withdraw? Or can he? Would it be Mr. Moss since he's the current applicant?
Well, it's...
Or is it already withdrawn because Moss lost stats?
I think because the application itself was made by Moss, but with the authorization of the owner. I think it's... I think there's a question of whether the owner can now say, "Okay, Moss is no longer in the picture, but this is my application." And I guess that's a legal question. And it may very well turn that this is the present owner's application made by Moss on their behalf.
And they don't want to follow constructive approval while we're waiting for answers?
Well, that's... And that's right. So if I understand the A&R law correctly, the only reason we can deny it is if we make a determination that it is a subdivision. And I'm not sure that that is the case.
I'll go back with a question. I agree with your statement about the subdivision as a reason for denial. But it would seem that if we had an incomplete or inadequate submittal... I mean, in the past, we've had A&Rs come before the planning board. And one of the requirements is to show all existing structures. And we've looked at the plans, or the plan, and said, "Well, we know there's a house, and you showed the house, but where's the barn?" "Oh, forgot." So the plan was not endorsed. It was sent back because it was inadequate. I mean, we've sent them back because they didn't have the North Arrow. We've even had some come in that said, "To the signature block, Westboro Planning Board."
I believe one back in 2010 was sent back because the wetland boundary wasn't even put in there. I apologize if that...
So there's... So in addition to the threshold for a subdivision, it would also... If the plan was defective by omissions or inadequate information or conflicting information, the board would be... Would not be required to sign it, nor would it be constructively approved. Now, I just... And again, this goes back to what Mrs. Bartolini said about, "We're not putting this under the microscope for the purpose of delaying or denying or anything else." We're trying to make sure that the actions of the board are proper for not only, you know, the public, but also for the applicant, to protect the rights of the applicant. Now, it was pointed out that... And I'm sure this is just a simple error, but it says here on the Form A, "Signature of applicant." And it says Jennifer... Virtue. And the line just below it says "Signature of owner." So it appears as though she just signed in the wrong spot. But again, it's not... It's inconsistent. Easily fixed. And part of what you were saying, Mr. James, about making a resubmittal that's clean. Did you have any more, Mr. James?
No, not at the moment.
Mr. Stein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify, am I eligible to vote on this if such a motion were raised because this issue was actually discussed before I was appointed? Has that been established, Mr. Stein?
The Mullins Rule. I believe that if you sign the one-page acknowledgement, it's consistent with the Mullins Rule, which is that the person who viewed the tapes, listened to the tapes, or was present during the initial or previous meetings, then it's my understanding that Mr. Stein can vote. But you haven't signed that yet.
I have not.
And there's no motion or vote before us. So I think you're free to speak as a full member of the board until we get to that point. And then we may call a timeout to see if you... How or if you'll sign that form. So you have the...
Thank you. For many of the reasons that I've heard previously during this meeting, it is not clear to me if we have a valid application for the A&R due to the questions of ownership, Mr. Moss's involvement at this point, and accessibility of the frontage. So that's all I have to say at this point.
So let's be... Well... You know what, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments? It's not an age thing, it could be any age.
Any questions?
Yes, Claire.
So are your... Whatever you decide...
Could you put a tag here?
Are you going to find yourself? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. So anything that you decide on today, is that still going to be reviewed by town council?
Depending. Depends on what you can say.
I'm sure that if the board takes action today, that it will be reviewed by town council, yeah. What the impact of that review would be, we're not sure.
It's not necessarily changed.
Right.
Tells to the steward, but still the vote. If that is the motion.
You bring up some very good points about how, you know, there's a little bit of a discrepancy that needs to be cleared up. I think the question, I guess, that also needs to be clarified is the whole thing of, was this really valid in the first place? Or some of the questions that Mr. James brought up that also need to be reviewed by town council, if they got one.
Thank you. Yes, Bridget. You have to state your name.
I'm Bridget Grady and a future name. Just to make sure I'm hearing this right. So Mr. Puscoli, he still plans to use the same plan of Mr. Moss? And so does he still plan to knock down the house?
Not necessarily.
I think he's reasserting his right. It's what he's trying to do, I think.
He indicated an interest in saving, continuing, as originally proposed, saving the mansion, but indicated through Mr. Puzoni that that would necessitate cooperation with the town in order for that to be possible to occur. But doesn't say, "No matter what happens, I'm going to save the mansion." He kind of leaves it open. Did I get it right?
Yep. Anyone else?
Chris Grady, Katie to blame. If you were to determine that the application were not valid, do we have time to pursue that? Given that... This is my first introduction to all this, pardon me. That we have a limited number of days, and maybe it would be constructively approved. Do we have time to communicate that the application were not void?
Yes.
We have to.
I was going to bring this up. It should be noted that the applicant and the owner and the owner's attorney are not here this morning. I don't think we received any information as to if they had planned to be here or if they didn't plan to be here. But they're not here. And so some of these questions... We've had situations where, for example, if everything was fine, the board was fine with it, but it was missing the North Arrow. Or it had a conflicting note that might say... I don't know. One note might say that those little ovals are a stone wall. And another note might say they're little trees. If this... Those type of things. During the 21 days, we've allowed the applicant proponent to take the plan back and make those little changes so that if the board votes, or when the board votes within the 21 days and decides to sign the plan, then our signatures are on a plan that doesn't have errors or omissions. And so that may be possible in this circumstance where these inconsistencies may be able to be cleared up before the end of the day on Tuesday. And we don't, with the owner not here or his attorney not here, I'm not sure if that's the type of thing that they might do. And then, of course, the board may deny it based on those things. And if that's determined to be valid or not contested, then the applicant can just straighten those things out and resubmit. And then the board may sign it. Yes, Claire?
Okay, so that, again, 104 Main Street. So that actually answers my question. You do have the right, if you choose, to deny it because it really isn't 100% correct. So you could deny it today. And then essentially, the clock for Tuesday night stops, ticking until whoever decides they want to resubmit another application, correct?
Unless the applicant challenges the denial where found to be erroneous as to the validity of the application and that it is constructively approved.
Okay, so did I miss... Neither one of their names is on the application. Is it Jennifer somebody else?
Virtue is, I believe, the wife and co-owner of the land.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't catch that, okay.
It's just a chief. She signed her name on the form as the applicant. When we've been informed that she's not the applicant, she's the owner, which is the next line down. Yeah, right. Line 1 on Form A says "Name of applicant." And it says Moss Development Incorporated. And then down here at the bottom, it says "Signature of applicant." And it's...
So essentially, you have a, for lack of a better term, an incomplete or incorrect 100% correct application, which then could say, "You guys can just deny it today, and then let's see what happens after that."
We could.
Okay.
See what the board wants to do.
Might not be the strongest hand.
I'm not sure I agree with that. It does state on the form who the owner is and who the applicant is. The fact that the signature is on the wrong line is not much to hang a hat on.
I too think a judge would say the intent was clear. So I'd rather not hang our hat on that technicality. So I'd rather not hang our hat on that technicality. My preference would be to delay till Town Council came back, speak to him Monday or Tuesday, assuming that we can squeeze into what I'm sure is a very busy schedule when an attorney's been on vacation for amount of time to get back in there. We have to get right in there, because we do have to act by Tuesday, and I'd rather confirm that. If he says go ahead, fine, but we could also talk to the applicant who has been cooperative, the owner has been cooperative, I think the applicant may have too, but the owner has been cooperating with the town. So I don't think that he would mind withdrawing the application and refiling and triggering another 21 days, but that's just me second guessing.
I would hope you're right. Anyone else that hasn't said something?
Yes, Ms. Ball.
I'm all ready for the same suit. I just wanted, is there...
Can you speak up for the advance?
Um, it's, do you have any idea as to what we could do moving forward, and if so, the estimated time we have?
I think the board, the board would probably say to, to stay involved, but it wouldn't be appropriate for the board to recommend any actions by you at this time.
Can I just, again, I'm using this as an educational process, but I love having this many examples. The reason where...
Amen.
Amen, but I encourage you. The reason that we can't, it's not that we're being uncooperative, but we're right now acting as an adjudicatory board, for all intents and purposes. That means you've got five judges before you, and we have to be impartial to the application before us and deal with the legalities. And if we were helping someone defeat a project at the same time we were supposedly being impartial in review of the correctness of the paperwork, we wouldn't do too well in court if challenged. So, and we could be found to be in conflict, and that would throw everything out again. So we're trying to be careful. Board of Select might be able to help you. The historic commission is represented here, the historical society has talked about things. There are groups in town that will be able to help you, and I think if we get this resolved, I think it's been made clear by the person who may become the true proponent, that he envisions the town helping him save the mansion and being still able to develop those other lots. So, yeah, sometimes you just look at somebody and say, they're just talking circus. That's the reason that we're trying to be impartial and not be too directive, because we can't be in the role we have.
So I haven't heard anyone on the board, or maybe I missed it, say that, you know, say that we don't want to sign the plan because it may impact the existing home. It seems like our focus is to make sure that the plan is administratively and technically correct for the whole, to make sure that the process is as good as it can be. So I want to go back to Mr. Fizoni's letter, where he's saying, "As, as discussed, my clients intend on holding the plan and any other permits, and there are other permits, they have or obtained until they determine how and if their current slash ongoing discussions with you and the town of South Grove proceed as they relate to possibly preserving the Garfield House, which is presently located on the property." So to me, that sentence is telling us that it's important to the property owner to have this plan, have an approved plan as they move forward. As you know, this was always my client's intention, and they wish to take appropriate steps to help preserve same while protecting their own interests as well. They are very optimistic that they will be able to accommodate everyone's desire to possibly save and refurbish the Garfield House. However, as noted in our discussions, it will require cooperation and participation by the community and its elected officials without compromising my client's rights as landowners. So we should move, we can move forward in trying to do this right at the same time as working with the property owner as they, as they state their intentions. So I think it's worth a try to try to meet again, and my last discussion with Town Council was last Friday, and he indicated that he would be back on this coming Monday and Tuesday and would be available. Now, the board has indicated that we won't have all five members on Monday and/or Tuesday, but all we need is three. So I'll go to the board and see who's available Monday and Tuesday. Mrs. Butterlin?
I'm available Tuesday.
I'm not available either, though.
Tuesday.
Are we saying at any time?
We'll narrow it down to the day, and then we'll pick the time. Probably going to be the evening.
Yeah, I like late.
Tuesday is better. That would be my preference.
And I'm always here.
How nice.
So that's four. That's, that's, that's good. So if, if something, you know, we have, we'll have one fallback, and we still have three for one person.
Or if somebody challenges Mr. Stein, then we still have three votes.
Can we figure out a time, because we would have to post today.
Yeah. Well, it would have to be after 10:10.
Yes.
I prefer Tuesday evening. It's better for the public, I think.
Are you both available Tuesday evening?
Yeah, my, my concern is, um...
Oh, after 12:00.
Yeah, how many?
Time.
Forty hours.
Is that specified anywhere?
Yeah, July 9th at 12:16, so...
Yeah, sounds like morning.
Tuesday morning. See? Attention to...
We're just trying to make sure we act within the 21 day, the 21 days, so that it does not automatically become approved in the event we want to take some action on it.
I'm early. Great, so adjusting, you know, the time.
10:00 AM Tuesday? Good.
So what direction do you want to give to the applicant?
I have a question first. Yes.
Thank you. When you deny something, do you give a reason?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So...
It has to be a good reason.
Right, okay. Considering that the person who is, for all intents and purposes, seems to not want to demolish the house, who's the owner, Jennifer, you know, is the one who would have to fix the mistake on the application, to deny it now and say the reason for denial is such and such, you know, the signature, okay? And then that would be denying it. She could fix it, and essentially then you guys would have another 21 days. You are getting down to, to schedule a meeting for 10 o'clock Tuesday morning, you are getting down to the 11th hour plus. That's all I have to say. So in other words, and I understand you don't want to hang your hat on something or whatever, but you are hanging your hat on the person who essentially wants to preserve this house. I can't understand that if you have to give a reason that that person would have any problem with the fact that, you know, with the fact that they just have to fix the formula.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's confusion about us approving the A&R and whether or not the house comes out. I mean, we could approve this, and the house could stay, and the whole property could stay the same. The request to demolish the house would come afterwards through the request of build on the property and everything else. So this, this is one step in the process if it were to go down the path to that. I mean, there could be, even without this A&R, a request could come in, not through this board, requesting, I want to rip this house down and put something else up in its place. This is just allowing the property owner options if they were to market the house to someone else, or, or the lots, the property itself, for future development. So it's not a matter of, you know, if this A&R gets us through today, or by us not taking any action, it doesn't mean the house is going down. That's going to be a separate item.
And can I just follow up on that? So an application would get filed, a demolition, demolition application would get filed with the building inspector, and then there's certain requirements that they, that he would be looking for, the filing with the state for asbestos removal, there's other criteria, and then he has 30 days to act on a demolition permit. So even though the planning board would approve these lots, doesn't necessarily mean they're buildable lots. You still have to get septic approval. If there's any conservation or wetland, you still have to go before wetlands to put houses on the lot. So the board is just looking at lot approval.
Mr. Stein? I just want to address your question in regards to, you know, maybe the perception of inaction or delay on the part of the board. We don't want to, I don't feel that it serves the town's best interest for us to rush to a decision on this application, when there are questions that really, in my opinion, would serve us best to have addressed by council.
Right, that's why I asked a question about council previous.
So, I mean, unfortunately, it's just the timing of when he's available at this point. I don't feel like we should, we could, we could do it any other way. That's all I can say, given our circumstances. But I agree with you. We don't want to put...
See what it's now.
It is what it is. Thanks.
Well, he's busy. My thought of doing a Tuesday meeting would be to give us time to fit in whenever that is and to all those schedule on Monday, get his input, convey it to the applicant, or the non-applicant, become an applicant, and still have time on Tuesday to have processed all that, worked out the best resolution, and act upon it Tuesday morning. That's my thought.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Carol Travis with the Ninth Flag Row. I have a question regarding the applicant. The, the wife, the woman, co-owner that's put in the application, is it, or why is it not required that she is a co-owner, that both signatures are there, both the husband and wife, or, you know, each co-owner? Is there anything about that? Like if I wanted to go do something with, I'm a co-owner of my property?
We'll ask Town Council that one.
Okay.
So the question, this is, it says current owner of record, Jennifer Virchell.
I'd just like to say that she is the sole...
So I suspect her to be sole. That's the answer.
For legal purposes.
So let's talk about, taking Claire's advice, who, is anybody available on Monday other than, you know, we know Mr. Mills isn't around, but what I'd like to, I'd like to consider posting two meetings, one for Monday, we haven't talked to Town Council, and we don't know his availability. So we'll post a meeting for Monday, post another meeting for Tuesday. So we have a fallback. It gives, gives Town Council more flexibility as far as appearing and helping us.
Monday's tough.
Monday night, no. Monday day, yes.
Monday day for you, Mr. Jenks?
Afternoon. Well, actually, or evening.
So let's quickly, like, Monday, how long would it take?
Yeah.
Like Monday at 3:00? That works for me.
So who can go on Monday at 3:00?
All of them.
Mrs. Brady?
Yeah, it's a learning process for me, too. What, if any, information does the applicant have to include on the plan regarding septic? Because that was a huge discussion regarding the legality of setback. And does nothing?
Not, not within the planning board's purview, so, same with Zomi. Our approval of an A&R does not say that the Zomi is approved also. These are multiple steps. So we don't, we don't get into the septic at all.
I want to thank you also for agreeing to meet earlier. We'll be set.
Do we have agreement that if, if we are going to have a motion and entertain for two meetings, that the second is on Tuesday at 10:00 AM?
I have Tuesday at 10:00 and Monday at 3:00.
Okay, because you went back to talk about whether we had to stay within the 20, or didn't go back to tell us. So that's, as the person I know is going to turn to, because I want to be ready.
Well, the town planner has been taking notes here. We have, we definitely have some questions that we're aware of, but when council comes here, he may have questions for us that would prompt more questions. So that's why it's, I think we're feeling comfortable that before we proceed, we have council here with us. So if there's nothing else, we'll rely on the town planner, her notes to be carried forward to Town Council, and we'll rely on the town planner to have these two meetings posted, one for Monday at 3:00 PM and Tuesday at 10:00 AM. Is that what the board, where we left it with the board? If there's nothing else, then I'll have to take the motion.
No, we have one more agenda item. It's just appointments.
Yeah, but he's...
Oh, right, motion, sorry. I forgot to adjourn.
And with this, I think the, the board is still sending a very strong message that we, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm getting the message that the board is willing to work with the property owner, moving forward through the process, respecting the property owner's right and desire to have an A&R. owner's right and desire to have an A&R on file, and to move forward with that. I think that's important, that we acknowledge that, that that's what the property owner want, how the property owner wants to proceed. Mrs. Bowler?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the planning board delay its A&R decision in order to allow you and the Town Planner to discuss this application further with Town Council, and, and then to process that information so that we can reconvene on either Monday or Tuesday of next week, dates being July 28th and July 29th. If we meet on Monday, that it, we would do so at 3:00 PM in the McGoliffe Hearing Room at Town Hall, and if we meet on Tuesday, that it would be at 10:00 AM in the same location, and at that time to take action on the A&R.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I have a discussion. I would like to change the motion, remove the word "delay," and replace it with "move forward."
Continue.
I accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion. Just second. That is actually the parliamentary way to vote it.
It's like a C-12 class.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Aye. Thank you, we have one other agenda item, which is to make some appointments. You're welcome to stay, or go off and enjoy this beautiful day.